All right, welcome to this afternoon's works pre-meeting. We are going to start off by asking if there's any commissioner like to take one of the regular business items for a discussion.
Oh. Okay. Yes. Yes, from our business meeting. I thought we already have a list of what, seven things?
No, that's for the pre-meeting, but we also ask if there's anything you want to discuss that's going to be on the regular agenda meeting.
Oh, yes it is. I have a couple things.
I say number one, Chairman.
I'm sorry?
The gift card distribution for the future use.
That's, we're going to discuss that in just a second.
Okay, we are, okay.
But right now, is there anything about what?
That I want, okay, I'm good.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, I have.
She got some.
Let's see, number 22, the ordinance, 2022-211. This ordinance amends the code to define developed and undeveloped land and regulates the uses for each. I want to know what the changes are. And Chuck is right on time.
Yep. So, good morning, afternoon, evening, where are we? So, the changes are that right now, the way our code reads, it requires people who have undeveloped land to have it maintained like it is developed. So, it just kind of makes it clear that when we're talking about prop, when we're talking about grass being too high, stuff like that, we're talking about land that already is developed as defined by our code. When we're talking about undeveloped land, that's what we're talking about maintaining, so there's not dumping trash and things like that. So, that's where the difference is, because as it read, someone could tell a property owner that doesn't have anything on there but trees that they need to go and cut all, clear-cut all the area to keep it where it was looking like a regular lawn.
So, in other words, when you get complaints from citizens, there might not be a house on some property, but somebody owns it and it's overgrown and people are talking about rodents and snakes coming from that property, this ordinance addresses that and states that they must maintain undeveloped property as well.
Well, we didn't have that before.
It was broad enough that it could even go to wooded area. So, what it does is make it so it's clear what standards are applying for property that's developed versus property that's undeveloped.
Okay, but we didn't take anything out, right?
No, no, no.
So, it does have a few teeth in it?
Yes, I mean, it still, what we already acquire, which is that if you, if your property is, if your property is considered developed, you have to maintain it.
Right.
And if it, whether it's developed or undeveloped, you still have to keep, can't have trash and stuff all over there and trees and things along those lines. It just makes it clear that if you're in the woods, we're not expecting you to go and mow down and keep the whole area clear. It's just has to be, it's related to, for the.
But to see if you can dump on it.
You're right, you can't dump on it, but it's, the only thing that the developed property is exempt from is the, the, I'm sorry, the undeveloped property is exempt from the 10-inch grass requirement. But if it's developed, everything applies that it's always applied to.
Okay. Okay. Well, I have, what about, if it's something I want to take off?
No, that's not time.
Okay.
You're good?
Let's see, hold on, 24, let's see, what's 24? Oh, I won't take that one off, so, okay. I'm fine.
All right, well then, let's go to our presentations. The first one for this evening is gift card distributions. Ms. Merritt.
Good evening. So, I wanted to bring this discussion item forward and talk to you and get some feedback and direction from the board on how they want to use the current inventory of gift cards we have, and the direction on how to use the existing points we have from our credit card and the, and future points as well. So, currently, we have $3,125 in various gift cards. We have about 760,000 points on the credit card currently that we can turn into additional gift cards. Or we have talked to Wells Fargo and they are also willing to do like a cash back on the credit card or rev, so we could book some revenue for it. So, I just wanted to get some direction from the board on how y'all would like to proceed with that. My understanding that the gift cards have been used for Mayfest in the past. So, we could use it for something like that again, some events that y'all might want to have. So, I included a copy of the gift cards that were in there, but just to kind of give you an idea, they're American Express, Amazon, AMC, Walmart, Publix, Chili's, Maggiano's, and On the Border, Outback, Carrabba's, Fleming's and Bonefish, Kroger, and Home Depot. So, and they're all in $25 increments.
So, the question becomes whether or not we would want to, the ones we have on hand, we have on hand.
We have on hand.
So, we have option of, again, you know, give them Mayfest and other events such as that. Moving forward though, will the points that come from trap, that's where they come from, right?
Correct. And I just want it, and I guess we'll come back with a resolution once the decision's made by the board on how you want to move forward with the points we have and any future points that we collect.
So, we would have, also have option of just turning that back into money and placing that back into fund balance.
Be the easiest way to do it, but we can also do the cashing for credit, for gift cards as well.
I have a question. Do, are y'all going to do that too on SkyMiles, like the American Express, Delta gift cards? Because that, that's a way we can get.
We don't have a American Express. This one is a Visa card through Wells Fargo. Didn't even think about that.
Yeah, because when, when we're going on trips and things of that nature, we can use those SkyMiles for free trips.
I can definitely look into that.
Okay.
Definitely look into that.
Definitely a good idea there. But it would be, we have approximately how many cards left?
There's about 150 left.
So, if we expended those or gave those out for events and employee appreciation and so forth.
Yeah, I had listed a few things, employee appreciation, teacher appreciation, charity, CASA, I mean, a number, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas for families.
But my point is, does the board want to continue to receive those cards, or are we good just stopping getting gift cards and just changing that into the money and then putting it back into the fund balance?
Yeah, I think that's the easiest and most feasible solution to go with.
What do you think?
It's definitely a more controlled.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've never had the use of the gift card. So, where are these cards and how do you get them?
Well, they are in a safe upstairs. When I came over, discovered that we had them, and I know they've been used for Mayfest in the past, so I had an inventory done, that's how we came up with the $3,100. So, this would be up to the board on how they want to handle them moving forward.
And basically, if there's been any event, then the commissioner could just ask if they want to utilize some of the gift cards as giveaways.
Yes.
I know I've given some to the school system for teacher appreciation.
That would be good.
So, yeah, so we can still do that.
Yeah.
With the remaining ones, but what I'm hearing.
Or maybe a commissioner, or maybe a commissioner that hasn't used them or don't know about them? Let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these the same ones that Parks and Rec use or whatever?
I'm not sure how exactly they've been used in the past. I did ask that and I was told that they were used for Mayfest at one point in time. So, I'm.
Parks and Rec?
No, well, senior services.
But Parks and Rec has used some of those before as well.
Okay.
As well as, some has been presented by Gas South and some of the other organizations in the county.
Okay, so is there a deadline on either reverting them to something or using them?
No, it's just building up. I mean, we're probably putting about 20, $30,000 on the credit card a month. So, I mean, it builds up. We've got about 760,000 right now that we can convert to cash, or we can convert to gift cards, just whatever the board's pleasure on that is.
But let me interject for a second, because on your, the information you provided, the Ameri, I think it was American Express card has expiration date on it.
Yes, the, there's 25 of those and they expire in November of '27. The rest of them do not have an expiration date.
Okay. I am partnering with Parks and Rec for the Fall Festival. So, I would like to check with that committee.
Okay.
To find out if Parks and Rec are already using them, or if we can use them for something.
Nobody's reached out to me so far. Just something I came across, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to get some guidance on.
And I think, I think it'd be great, you know, to still kind of keep them as needed, more or less, but like you said, on the ones that are about to expire, whatever, if you all can get the money for those and, and go from there, that's fine.
With the points that have not been converted yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I guess that would be determined how the resolution is written, if you want to just strictly do them for revenue, or if you want to, we could flip back and forth if something comes up.
Okay.
You want to take that question?
Well, I was going to make a recommendation that perhaps maybe we just split what we have by five, and then however you all decide to use them, you can just use them, and then we just keep track until they're all gone, and then the rest of them go, I mean, the rest of the points get converted to cash. I don't know if that's something that's feasible.
That's fine with me.
That's feasible, yeah.
And let us know what the total, what the totals are.
We've got 3,125 right now, so split five ways, I don't have a calculator.
Well, I'm saying like, so we have, say, 25 American Express, so each commissioner would get five American Express, each would get five or four AMC, however they're split out, and then sort of number of cards, and you can just decide what you want to do.
That's reasonable.
Okay, so how long have we had these?
I know they've been there since July. Ms. Chairman, how long have we had these?
I don't know, they've been there for a while, I guess.
I mean, years or?
I couldn't answer that.
How long have you?
I would imagine it's probably been since the credit card was opened up for travel.
Okay.
I don't remember when that was.
Yeah, I like the suggestion that was made.
So, basically, devied them up and then from moving on past that point, converted to revenue.
Revenue, okay. Now, do you want these delivered to your boxes, or do you want me to maintain them until y'all find a direction?
I just want you to maintain mine.
I will, you maintain them.
Okay. Will do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will not be hearing from, I think it's Mr. Jicky on three, four, five or six. So, at this time, we're going to move to community healthcare benefits coordinator.
Item number two, Chairman Turner. Item number two.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I skipped somebody. I'm sorry, resolution, let's go to item number two, 2022-212, articles of agreement with community charitable organizations.
Okay, so, resolution 22, 2022-2-12 is for the Commissioner's Block Grant, Local Assistance Grant. I had emailed y'all, I guess about a week or so ago, the recommendations that we have. And Mr. Brenson is here if you have any questions about the individual recipients, or if y'all want to make any changes to the recommendations. On the guidelines for the recommendations, I kind of tried to go out, go with what was done previous last year, so if y'all have any recommendations, I can change it.
What is done according to a point scale?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
You have to, what's the minimum?
Ninety and above was put on the list.
Okay. Anybody got any input, questions?
I just want to know, when, when will it come before us for a vote?
Well, if y'all want, we can put it on tonight. I know Dr. Adams will.
No, because I've been looking over it, so I have, I still have.
Okay, then it'll be on the 18th.
Yeah. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, now, community healthcare benefits coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning and get you up to date on some changes that we are making to our community-based healthcare program, which has been in effect back since probably 15 or 16, when we started looking and building out our nurse practitioner program. I did want to take just a minute and recognize my community care team that is here with us this evening. Wave, yeah, there you go. We could not do this without them, and they are the driving force behind this program and how we're going to attempt to provide some increased services to our citizens, at the same time reducing some of our uninsured population here in the county. This also is the driving force behind the consideration of the new Community Care Benefits Program Manager or Person, which will be on the agenda tonight. So, the purpose of this presentation, or the purpose of our community care program is Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Community Care Program is committed to the advancement of equitable access to healthcare and other essential services through data-driven and patient-centered interactions. We also want to develop community-based healthcare opportunities with the goal of improving community health while maximizing efficient use of E911 services. So, we've all talked about over the last few months, even going back over a year ago, with kind of the fatigue that is setting in amongst fire EMS, police officers, as we look at the increased demand for services. And what this presentation will do is give you a little bit of insight as to why that is occurring, and some things that we can do locally through programming that we already have in place, just by reimagining, revamping, and restating what our mission goals and objectives are. We believe we can actually start to make some meaningful intention in that while improving the quality of life for our citizens. So, when we go ahead, when we look at our current state, so total 2021 call volume, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services responded to 51,002 calls for service. Of those, 77% are 39,484 where EMS calls are patient-related. Out of those 39,484, we transported 18,385 of those, with 68% being categorized as basic life support and 31% being categorized as advanced life support. One of the key metrics that we've started tracking now is kind of what are the age demographics, demographics of whom we are transporting and where are we transporting them, more importantly, why? And some of this is going to get laid out for you tonight. So, of our transports, 13,392 are under the age of 65, or said roughly 73% of that. Go ahead. So, as we start to look at what are some of the community healthcare.
Can I interrupt with a?
Yes, sir.
For clarification purposes, on that last slide, what is the definition between your advanced and your basic life support?
So, advanced and basic life support is driven by the services we provide, whether or not it requires a certain number of medications, a certain type of procedure, and some of it, quite frankly, is just driven by the level of call. And then, of course, then that gets into the level of certified personnel that can provide that level of care. So, when you look at an advanced life support call, and there's a lot of metrics, but I'll try to simplify it, you're looking at your traumas, your shootings, your stabbings, your cardiovascular type incidents, stroke, heart attacks, those types of things, basic life support, your general sick calls, a lot of the, you know, the things that kind of come into 911 as a result of a lack of access to primary care.
Thank you.
And then there's different definitions when you look at billing and, and everything else, but.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're on that, how much, or will we be affected by the closing of WellStar? Do we have a lot of transports that have gone to WellStar Hospital, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It will have a tremendous impact on our service for, in a variety of reasons. Number one, with losing one of the only two trauma centers in the metropolitan Atlanta area, there will be some, some interesting conversations about how we handle the amount of traumas that we currently take downtown. With Southern Regional not being, or having a trauma designation, pretty much everything that meets the criteria for trauma has to go downtown. So, now, we're going to have to start looking at, once Grady is at capacity, what does that mean? For our service, it's going to mean we have to go further north, potentially to another facility, whether that's in Kennesaw, whether that's in another, or do we have to start flying more patients? So, there's, there's going to be some interesting thought around that. So, one of the things that we're trying to do and the driver behind this program is let's try to mitigate a lot of the basic life support and a lot of the calls that maybe can be handled in some setting other than the hospital, so that we free up the hospital for those emergent patients, those cardiac events, strokes, heart attacks, shooting, stabbings, motor vehicle accidents that need that acute level of care and may potentially have to go downtown. When AMC South closed, which was the old South Fulton Hospital about a year or so ago, about eight months ago, we saw a tremendous impact on not only our service, but Southern Regional with that influx of patients. With Atlanta Medical Center now closing, what you're going to see start happening is a lot of the non-acute calls that are at Grady and some other are going to start being shifted out into the local communities, because they're going to have to free up bed space for your traumas and your more critical patients. So, there's going to be an increased demand on our overall system of care, which quite frankly wasn't set up to be successful to begin with.
And Chief, with us having those trauma centers closing, as we talked about, the urgent care centers and setting them up around Clayton County, that's what we're going to really need in order to make sure that, you know, we maintain what we already have going on, so that's the main thing that.
And we're going to touch on that in about four slides.
Okay.
I got you coming.
All right.
So, as we continue to look at the community healthcare barriers outside of what we just discussed, as you know, Clayton County is a federally designated healthcare medically underserved area. We're also federally designated healthcare professional shortage area. Our current county-wide demographics, 40% uninsured, 22% Medicaid, 11% Medicare. What we're looking at from a physician-to-patient ratio in primary care is 3,800 patients to one primary care. When you look at how that vets against the state average, the state average is 2,000 to one, and the national is 1,700 to one. When we look at our mental health coverage, which a lot of our mental health patients went to AMC South prior to it closing, so that was a major hit to us, we're at 1,500 to one on the mental health ratio, with the state average being over half of that, at 700 to one. So, why it becomes important, when you look at the 40% uninsured, the 22% Medicaid, and 11% Medicare, is when you look at 20% of our EMS patient counters are 65 years and older. So, that starts to get into why we have a higher incidence of Medicare and Medicaid. You look at 30% of those are ages 20 to 39. What we see within our own organization is that makes up a large portion of some of that uninsured, because a lot of our younger population, they're making the choice between healthcare benefits or bringing home more money in their paycheck. So, even some of our own public safety officers who have a job where healthcare is kind of critical, they make the choice, they're young, bulletproof, so they choose not to get insurance. A lot of it becomes an affordability standpoint as well, as these plans continue to kind of escalate in cost with inflation and everything else. A large part of our population are making choices between health insurance or groceries, gas, the ability to get to work, and the ability to become sustainable. So, one of the things that we're starting to look at is how do we start to eat into that 40% of uninsured, and how do we start to make a difference so that they do have access to that primary care, they can get the level of care they need, so that they're not leveraging our service or our medical facilities as that main level of primary care? Go ahead. As we dug into that a little bit deeper, and this is really telling, so when we look at our current trends, we have 250 individual address that have 10-plus visits to our service within a 45-day span. So, right out of the gate, that's a minimum of 2,500 calls just to, just to those addresses within the last 45 days. We've had 45 patients account for over 582 calls or 10-plus EMS calls within a six-month period. Now, if you look at what the National Institute for Health Standard is, they classify a high user as having four or more visits in the six months. We didn't run that metric, because that number would be off the charts. So, what we're looking at is trying to identify a patient set or a population set that we can start to manage and we can start to make an effective difference. So, we upped that to 10, and we still had 45 patients that account for 582 transports within that same, within that same time period. So, what our answer to this is simply what we've revamped and retitled to 4C, and that's Clayton County Community Care Program, where we foresee a brighter and healthier future. I can't take credit for that, that was their work. So, I told them to come up with something snazzy, and, and that's what they came up with.
One question, well, on two slides before, is that where you had the numbers of transports correct here? Is that, was the query ran for just uninsured, or was this query ran for all?
So, it's broken down by us uninsured across all the payer mixes, so if you break those numbers down a little bit further, so if you look at our biller data that's coming from our third-party biller, out of our transports, that number goes down, the uninsured is 26.45% of our transports are uninsured. The number for Medicare/Medicaid, or Medicare/Medicare/HMO jumps to 36%, which gets into the 65 and older range. And then our Medicaid/Medic, or Medicaid/Medicaid/HMO goes up, well, it stays steady at 22%. So, we've provided you an overall look at the community from a snapshot, and then we boiled it down to you into what our transports are. Because currently, the way the EMS system is designed, if we come out to your home and we treat you and release you, that's non-compensated. So, because we're not, we're not treated as a healthcare provider in EMS, we're treated as a transportation supplier. So, that's why we only get reimbursed if we transport you.
Over a certain amount of miles.
Over a certain amount of miles. So, another little trick that Medicaid put in there is you don't get compensated for any transports 10 miles or under.
Correct.
In our county, we're, very often, we're not further than 10 miles away from a hospital.
The state, it has that on their agenda to begin to look at that this session, I do know that.
We provided them the data they asked for, so we're eagerly awaiting that. So, as we get into what the 4C program will aim to do, is this is our current paradigm. It's nothing simple, it's nothing fancy. You have two choices. You call 911, we can leave you where you are, or we can take you to the hospital. That's it. And then if that does, and you can kind of see the pinwheel, which is, we get stuck in that paradigm, right? So, that's how we wind up with 480 or 45 addresses that call us 10 or more times a month. There's not an off-ramp for these citizens, there's no other services. So, what we aim to do is merge our current paradigm with what our Community Treatment Unit program has been doing in kind of a new model. So, what we want to do is take that 911 or that hospital patient before they dial 911 and go visit them in their home. We want to use our care plan team associated with our nurses and our medical director to go out, do a comprehensive home visit that not only looks at their medical, their medical needs and what they need done to control their chronic illnesses, but look at the social aspects, look at the environmental aspects, and see if we can bore down into what their need is for our services. Out of that, we want to develop a care plan for them. Kind of one of the caveats that's been missing in our ability to be able to complete this loop is the benefits component. And what we mean by the benefits component is going out and sitting down with our patients, our citizens and our patients and saying, let's walk you through all the things that you are eligible for and find out why have they not signed up for it. Many of them, what we found out in some of the initial data we've, we've looked at and assessed, they start the process, they become confused by it, frustrated by it, and they quit. So, they're eligible for benefits, they just simply don't have anybody to help walk them through. We're going to fix that by onboarding our own benefit specialist, someone who is well-versed in healthcare benefits and what's available to all levels, not only our young citizens, but our senior citizens, so we can start to close this gap. What that allows us to do from a service provision standpoint is now we can close this circle. So, not only can we go do the home visit, we can generate a care plan, we can get them signed up for the benefits that they need, and what that allows us to do is refer them out to primary and specialty care, which at the end of the day is going to give Clayton County a healthier community. One of the things that, to go back to Commissioner Anderson's point, one of the business models that Southern Regional wants to set up is a network of urgent cares in the, in the community that does what we're building right out of the gate. So, we're going to pilot this program, we're going to be used as a model to where we can start to expand this out within the community. And as we look at some of the things that we're doing, not only from our mobile clinics, which we'll get to, but then our brick and mortar that we're going to be building adjacent to Southern Regional, that will kind of start serving as that pilot and that model. So, our goal is to reduce the dependence on 911 and Southern Regional for primary care in Clayton County, which will help us drop that uninsured rate and improve the livability of our, of our citizens from our youngest ones up to our seniors, which will help us build that community that we all know we can. We just got to address some of these gaps and issues where there's not a foreseeable plan in place to do that. So, so what is the return on the investment, or what is the benefit to our community by going down this road? So our goal is to reduce the dependence on nine-one-one and Southern Regional for primary care in Clayton County, which will help us drop that uninsured rate and improve the livability of our cities, of our citizens from our youngest ones up to our seniors, which will help us build that community that we all know we can. We just got to address some of these gaps and issues where there's not a foreseeable plan in place to do that. So, so what is the return on the investment or what is the benefit to our community by going down this road? Increased access to the appropriate healthcare. Right now, the healthcare that we're, that our citizens are getting is not always the most appropriate as far as facility. Quality, obviously, is through the roof. My men and women provide superior healthcare, but quite frankly, an ambulance is not always the best spot for you. The hospital is not always the best spot for you. Our issue is there's no alternatives. This is an alternative. It provides a better system of care and positive outcomes, patient and citizen satisfaction, employee satisfaction. What we're trying to do is reduce fatigue. Take those nine-one-one calls out of the nine-one-one system before they have to dial it in the first place. Leave those ambulances in service for those critical calls. One of the things that we're concerned about with the closure of AMC is the availability of our units. If we're having to transport further distances out of the county, that's a longer time back in service. Nine-one-one doesn't stop ringing because all of our transport units are out of the county. And that's going to be a reality that we have to start looking at, is how do we start to look at those spend times of getting those units back into the county and back in service? And then we want, of course, reduce the uninsured rate, which is going to help us increase economic development in the county as we start to look at how businesses look at the community when they look to come in by reducing that uninsured rate, helping our citizens have access to primary care. What we're going to be doing too is supporting through referrals those primary care phys, or practices that are owned by Southern Regional and other local businesses. So now, we're sending them, our patients that are now insured and can help prop up their business models as well. So how are we going to do it? Right now, we're going to function through two mobile clinics that have lab and x-ray capabilities, exam rooms, assessment, testing, targeted community need programs. So we're fixing to take healthcare out into the community and set up areas where we can go get the patients, bring them to us, do the assessments, get them the care that they need before we have to go treat them in their home via an ambulance. And then, of course, employee health and wellness and onboarding. That will transition in the near future to a brick and mortar location, which we've talked about, that will be adjacent to Southern Regional, a potential for some community walk-in type of services, employee health and wellness, and then will serve as a reha, a resource hub for my mobile clinics and my clinic team that will be in the field. Y'all are always, or y'all have already seen our clinic that we have here now. This has been in our community. What you haven't seen is the new one that will be here in November, and that's what she looks like. Forty-seven feet long, x-ray capabilities, full lab, hearing, vision, respiratory, all the screening to do, pretty much anything we need to do in the field from an employee health and wellness, as well as providing some additional resources to our community to try and make sure we understand from a baseline perspective where they are and what their needs are. So in short, that's the justification for what we're bringing for you tonight with the community benefits coordinator position and kind of what their role in helping us transform, transform care in the community will be. And with that, I'm finished.
Any questions? I do have one. Commissioner Davis. I understand, a great presentation. I understand it's from a need and a service standpoint. How are you suggesting that you reduce the uninsured? That part is still cloudy to me. Are you looking for insurers to come in to partner with to say, look, let's get these folks insured?
So there's a couple of different ways. One of the things that we've, we've realized, and we ran a version of this a few years back with Captain Baker, who's here tonight, he was Lieutenant Baker then. But one of the things we realized in going out and sitting down with these patients and helping them understand their illnesses, a couple of things. One, a vast majority of them don't understand the chronic illness they have. Take diabetes, for example. We would go in with a chronic diabetic patient who we manage ten, fifteen times, sometimes a month, go through their cabinets and realize it's all hostess snack cakes and things that diabetics should not be eating. We counsel them on that, we talk to them about their illness. We realized a lot of them didn't understand what benefits they were eligible for. As I've referenced a little bit in my presentation, the forty percent uninsured is not that they're not eligible for insurance. A lot of them don't understand the process, they don't understand how to navigate Medicare and Medicaid. My mother-in-law lives with me, I've tried to help her navigate it, it's difficult for me to figure out. So I can just imagine a senior citizen who's trying to get on these benefits or someone who doesn't understand the healthcare industry to know even where to go. Where do I start? How do I sign up? So by bringing that benefit person in who can sit down with them and say, hey, here's how you go about doing it, here are some services we can link you with so they can help you navigate this process. A lot of it isn't they're not eligible, they simply don't know what they're eligible for. So there's a huge education component to this, both on the disease process but on the benefits that they're eligible for as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, will we be doing any, anything based on like sliding fee scales for the people who can't get insurance at all?
Yes, ma'am. So that's, you know, as a government, we provide a service.
Okay.
So part of, you know, the care, the, the model that Southern Regional was looking at putting up that their new CEO has done in the past is it's just off that. It's very low cost to get in, be seen, and get kind of the, the level of care you need. So we're not going out there to look, to try and, and drum up revenue and start billing for the services we're providing. What we're trying to do is go out there and address the underlying needs as to why are they calling nine-one-one in the, in the first place? So if they have to hit our nine-one-one service, we don't have a choice but by law to bill them because we have to bill everybody fairly and equitably. So what we're trying to do is eliminate the need for that ambulance to be out there where you get that bill, where you get transported to an ER where you may not need to be there. And we're not saying that, you know, folk don't, there's, there's plenty of folk that need those services, but we also know that there's a vast majority of our population that just need good access to primary care and that urgent care for, for when you need it, right? Because we all know sitting in an ER for six hours don't make you feel better. At the end of the day, sometimes you feel worse, and a lot of them get frustrated and leave. And we have that happen. We take them to the hospital, they get frustrated, they leave, they go out in the parking lot, call us back, and we take them to another one. And the process kind of starts over again. So that's not what we want for our citizens. So there's got to be a better way to provide this system of care. And we believe we're, we're on the right track by what we're wanting to do.
And you guys have done an excellent job. Like I said, in my last life, I was a nursing assistant, and so I worked in a pediatric unit. And so we kind of had pediatrics over here, adult medicine over here, so we could better service. So just as you all look into that, you know, just make sure that, you know, you kind of make sure we look at those P's because our babies definitely need that care, you know? And like you said, the adults get frustrated, so just kind of breaking that up as well.
And we'll have some scrubs for you.
Okay.
If you want to get back in the game.
Yes, a couple of questions. Just on what Dr. Anderson just said, so will we be servicing pregnancy babies and all?
The thing with our pediatric population is through Peach Care, a lot of those benefits are already in place. So with our pediatric patients and with our elderly population, there's, there's a lot more instance where things can be hidden than what we have the capability to diagnose in the field. Our nurses are very good, but we want to make sure that our, our babies, our pediatric populations, we're just giving them information. And as I said, that's not really where we're seeing our target groups. Our target groups are that, really, that twenty-year-old up to just under sixty-five is, is, is our sweet spot and what we're going to be focusing on, because that's the vast majority of our, of our business.
I just thought about it when she said that.
Yeah.
It's a very good point, but Peach Care is, is a great thing for our baby, so it takes care of, of our kids.
It's two things, Peach Care and it's another one too, similar to, but anyway. Maybe I missed it, but on your mobile units, have you all decided where they will be located? I think I can tell from the map, or close to, but I'm not sure.
So go back to the heat map, Zach, for just a minute. So the clinics right now stay posted at our headquarters, it's where their power source is and all that. What our plan is and what this presentation is based off, our initial patient base that we're going to go look at is exactly what you see on this map, that big red blob, which is Garden Walk Boulevard, down Highway eighty-five, out Valley Hill. That's where we're going to be focusing. So these clinics will be in the community. So we'll be reaching out to these patients, we know who they are, we know where they are. Obviously, we're out there ten-plus times in six months. So what we will do is go talk with them and say, hey, here's what we're offering. Are you interested in sitting down with us and let us walk you through what may be available to you? Obviously, this is voluntary. This isn't a, you do this or you can't call nine-one-one anymore. That's not what we're doing. What we're trying to do is improve their quality of life by helping them understand their chronic disease process. And this is how we're going to go about doing it, is by hitting those high-need groups, which is this initial forty-five patients. We feel that's a good manageable start for our clinic team until our other resources can get here. But we will be in the community doing this, not asking them to come to us, we'll go to them and provide these resources.
Do we have a date or a timeline as to when some of this may get started? I know with the brick and mortar, I know that's going to be a while off, but with-
Our clinic team, which is seated behind me, has already started. They've already done a lot of the data, that's where this presentation came from. As I was talking about this with the COO, we felt it to be important that you understand the new directive, where we're going with this programming, so that as you get feedback from your constituents, say, hey, I saw your clerk, you know, your care team in the field, you would know what we're out there doing. This work has already started and it will continue with the approval of, hopefully, tonight of our benefits coordinator. We'll be out there talking with these folk, you know, as early as we can schedule appointments with them. The next clinic that you saw on the screen is set, we go up to do the inspection November second. So we fully anticipate it will be in the county mid to end of November. We'll have it here for y'all to come out and take a look at, but after that, it's going to hit the road and we're going to get going. So we will, this is already going and will continue to build as our resources become available.
So will you be running both of those mobile units simultaneously?
Yes, sir. So the, the current clinic that we have now, most of y'all have been in it for either vaccines or some of the other things we've done, but it does have fully functional exam rooms in it, so it will kind of host the exam component. The new clinic is primarily a diagnostic-type clinic, it does have some office space in it, but it has a fully functional x-ray suite in the back, a full lab up front. It can do drug testing and a lot of other things that we need to do. Plus, as I said, DOT-compliant vision, hearing, spirometry, and we've added eye stats, which allow us to do basic blood work and stuff like that on some of our patients. So both of them will run in tandem as a lab evaluation, studies and test portion, and then an evaluation portion.
Will it include eye exams, dental, or?
We haven't got to dental yet, but we can do vision. We do have a vision tester in there.
All right. Great presentation, Chief. We appreciate all that you and your staff are doing in this area. And as you said, this will be a great benefit for the county and definitely will increase the quality of life for especially those forty-five that you're going to hopefully be able to connect with and make a difference in their lives. Any other questions? We good? All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
With that being said, rather, we stand adjourned until six-thirty.